Do we have any announcements?
We are one week away from the first day of school. Families are encouraged to check the Springford website for important back-to-school updates, and students are reminded to finish up their summer work.
Anything else? Did you have a good vacation summer off?
Look how dainty she is.
Well, I'm not commenting on that.
Yeah, I was telling them, I was, I was at the, I was at the beach for like four weeks this summer, and my parents were like, "You better not be getting used to this. This isn't going to be like a new thing." And I was like, "Okay, fine." I mean, I guess you do have a point. So yeah, it's a great summer.
Until next summer, then you've got four more weeks. Alrighty. Public to be heard on agenda items only. Okay, we have one action item this evening. Administration recommends approval of the following new textbooks for 2019-20 school year. Funding will come from the curriculum budget and shall not exceed $14,500. Mr. Secretary, any comment? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose.
This, I see your question. So this was amiss in the original order. I don't know. But this, the ninth grade center, for some reason, was overlooked in the original order, even though they went through that in several iterations. But I have been informed that it was a error and amiss, and that's what the need is at this point. And I did get a copy of this, and it includes the licensing for six years. That's why it's so high. It's not 30 books at $14,000. Because that was my original first thought. It's not that. It's all the licensing and the materials that go with it.
So what will the teachers do in the meantime?
This resource is mostly digital content, so as soon as we have the approval, we can go forth with the order, and they'll have it ready to go.
So it's third, okay, it's digital, but we're getting 30 hard copies?
That is correct. So we have one class set, and then the additional online resources for each of the students that take the course.
Alright, thank you.
Clinton, for clarification, somebody could correct me if I'm wrong, but right now, they're still, when you buy, when you buy the online, they still give you books. Or you can buy the books without the online. But as soon as you buy the online, they throw it in the books because they have to justify what they charge for the online copy.
Alright, Ms. Raybar. Where are you? There you are. Did you have a good summer?
Yeah, I did.
Very much so. Thank you. Would you come up with me? Come on up. Hi, everyone. So I'm Christine Raybar. I'm one of the supervisors here for another four days. This is Amy Hiller, the supervisor for K to three. And the two of us wanted to present, want to be a part of this presentation today. I do want to say a few things. As everyone knows, in our world today, we hear a lot about autism. Sometimes it can be so much that it becomes background noise, but that doesn't diminish the out, the impact autism has on the child and the family with that child. Lucky for us in our present time, there are ways to help children with autism that there weren't before. Speech therapy, occupational therapy, social skills, just to name a few. So I was inspired many years ago, and still continue to be inspired by this family standing here with me today, the McNutt family. They have a son with autism, Justin, and they strive, every, everyone, they all strive together to help Justin be the best he can be. And he works really hard to do that, too. Having a child with complex needs is a challenge, it can be a challenge, and some, for some people, that would be enough. But the McNuts, they wanted to do more. They wanted to help the community and give back to Springford. They believe this quote by Helen Keller, "Alone we can do so little; together we can do so much." The McNuts utilize their Rita's locations in Collegeville and Voyers Ford, little plug there, to raise money for the Springford Education Foundation to help students with autism right here in our district. They are an example for other community partners, parents and businesses, and that they decide to give back to their own community. We utilize these funds to buy so many things to help students, things that may not be necessary to the program, but that enhance their ability to function, to communicate and learn. Swings, sensory rooms, professional development, new curriculums, technology, special seating, and so much more. It's been my privilege personally to know this family. No, I know. And we can't thank you enough, Amy, the supervisors and myself, and for all you do for our students here at Springford. Thank you also to the Education Foundation, the administration, and the board for supporting our programs every day. Albert Einstein, he had a learning disability. He said, "Only a life lived in service to others is worth living." And thank you for living in service to our students. Appreciate it. So I think you have something for us from our latest ICE for Autism. Good evening, everyone. Sorry this is so late. We did this in April, but it has been a busy summer because of the weather, so we just kind of got everything together. This year, we were very fortunate to have some community partners to help make this initiative so successful. The Builders Club at the middle school collected approximately $1,800. The New Goddard School located in the Collegeville area, Tim and Adrian Clark are the proprietors. They collected $150 for us. Phoenixville Federal and Collegeville collected $89. The Main Street Cafe, Anthony is the proprietor. They sold several pieces, the puzzle pieces, and rounded up their donation to $250. And there were a few schools that had dress-down days as well. We were very lucky this year to have two really nice sunny days at the stores. We had a big, big turnout with the community, the teachers alike. It's always fun watching the interaction with the teachers, with our staff, and with the guests, and the kids, and the homework passes, and all that stuff. So this year, we would like to present our check for, turn around, $7,254.86. And we appreciate, like, Justin, he's out of school for a year. He's, he's doing well. We haven't nailed down the job quite yet, but all the stuff that he learned here at Springford, we were very fortunate. And we're going to miss Christine a lot. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bev, as we're lining up, I've got a quick question for you. Because you've been doing this for how many years now?
I think it's like 10.
And if I remember correctly, I think like the first time you did it, the check was like a little less than $2,000?
Yeah, I think it was like $2,000, then it was a $4,000.
Yeah.
And here, we had $11,000.
Right. So over the years, I just want to...
I think it's over, it's about $50,000.
Right. That's just incredible. Now we just have to find a bank that cashes those big checks. Oh, okay. Right. Well, that's a great compliment. Thank you very much. She's not going to be too far away, so. Okay. You know, over the probably last couple of years, you know, every time around this time of year, or over the summer and all that, there's always this whole move or questioning as far as full-day kindergarten. You know, would Springford move to full-day kindergarten? Is Springford considering going to full-day kindergarten? Springford should go to full-day kindergarten. You hear all this stuff. So one of the things, and just want to preface this, this presentation, is that we're not making any decisions this evening. But what I did is, I was talking with Dr. Good, and I said, "I, I think that, you know, it would be to the board's advantage to, at least if we start to understand, you know, if we would in the future, next year, the year after, whatever it may be, if we start to think about going to a full-day kindergarten, because there are districts that seems to be this trend again. It kind of goes in cycles. I think school districts go to full-day kindergarten, some keep it, some do away with it, and it just seems to be all these cycles." And so I thought that, like I said, I was talking to Dr. Good, and I said, "You know, why don't we, going into August, at least start gathering," because he has, with his administration over the last couple of years as well, has thought about what the impacts could or would be to the district as well. And I said, "Why don't we put together a presentation for the board, just as a starting point, to say, we, we all need to be grounded on the same level as far as if this is some type of consideration, we need to know what we're looking at and where we would go from there." So with that, I'm going to ask Dr. Good to present his brief overview of what we would know right off the bat if we start going down this, down this road.
Thank you, Mr. Bella. As he mentioned, we have had some of the surrounding districts that have made this move. And so in looking at some of the trends that are happening, I wanted to make sure that the board had at least a beginning understanding of not only what full day would look like, but also where we're at right now. So let's start off with just a brief discussion of where we are right now in this process. We, as you know, have seven elementary schools, and in those elementary schools, we run half-day programs, either AM or PM. We have 13 kindergarten teachers operating out of 14 classrooms. Our average class size, we've maintained at 19 students. That's really our target area, 19-20. We try to stay in that area. And so we are currently running 26 sections of kindergarten, half-day programs. And those 26 sections are taught by 13 teachers. And you can see the breakdown up there. Our average comp, average salary and comp for our teachers at the kindergarten level are approximately $87,918. For a total cost of, and personnel for kindergarten of $1,142,937. That is, that's our salary and benefits to run our kindergarten program, 13 teachers. So that's where we are currently, right now. So in thinking about what would full day look like, and how do we get those numbers? Well, what we did is we based our numbers, if we went to full day, upon what we have in first grade. Historically, kindergarten has run about 150 students less than our first grade. And those parents are exercising other options. Either they're keeping their children home since kindergarten is not mandated, or they're sending them to a private kindergarten, or they're in daycare, or whatever the case may be. But suffice it to say that we run about 150 students less in kindergarten than we do in first grade. So what I did for this presentation's purpose is I took our first-grade numbers from 2019. Now, if we went to a full-day, everyday kindergarten...
Dr. Good?
Yes.
I just want to, because I, I'll jump over that slide. I want to reiterate that, when you go back one, it's 150 students on top of our current kindergarten class. So if you take 26 by 19, that's 494. So we're looking at somewhere between 600 to 650 students on average going into first grade. So potentially, that's what we're looking at from a kindergarten standpoint.
That's correct. We see that jump between kindergarten and first grade. So if we projected those numbers out, still maintaining, trying to maintain our 19-20 student average, it looks like we'd be running 27 full-day sessions, and we would need 27 teachers to accomplish that. So we would add, from moving from half-day to full-day, we'd be adding, we would need to add 14 additional teachers to cover that. So if we assumed that each teacher started at bachelor step one, so we look at the salary, we look at the benefits, total comp, $84,000. If we were to add those 14 teachers, it would be $1,178,940 salary and comp to add those 14 additional teachers at beginning step.
And I just want to, I'm sorry, but, because a couple of things I want to point. So what we're showing there, per the teacher contract, the starting salary for the school year of 2021 is $50,000.
Yes.
So it's not the national average of what people think, you know, is less than $35,000. Our starting salary in Springford...
In 2021?
In the school year 2021, per contract, is $50,000 plus benefits.
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Bella. So, so let's say we added these additional classrooms. We're going to need some materials. So I got a real quick estimate on what it would cost per classroom for materials. These are one-time startup costs. The Journeys materials, the EA, the English Language Arts materials, our everyday math and other materials. We were projecting about $9,700 per classroom, and at 13 classrooms, that's a total of $126,000. We also had to look at some furniture for those rooms. And we estimated that to be approximately $3,000, and for a total of $40,963. So those are one-time costs, understand. Now, each year, obviously, there are supplies that need to be purchased, but these are the major startup costs if you added those classrooms. So additional classroom material startup cost would be $167,063. So if you were to take a look at the new personnel, the new materials, new furniture, you're looking right around $1.3 million in personnel and startup costs for the furniture and supplies. So let's switch gears here, though, and let's talk about the classrooms, because that's where I'm a little, that's where it's a little bit more difficult. So if we, let's just get that part.
Part, go back. That's very important. So, huh? Can we just let them finish, so then we can all ask questions? Right. With due respect, it's unfinished. But it's important to point out that that's total salaries and everything...
With full day.
For full days, additional 2.4 million. Well, total.
Right, it'd be total.
Total cost, right.
Yeah, the 1.3 is your, is your, is your new stuff. Your existing is 1.1. Okay. All right. Additional classroom space. This is where it gets a little interesting. We are currently using 14 classrooms. I've established that if we went to full day, we need 27 classrooms. We have some classrooms available, so I listed up those. I listed those, so we, in looking at the district, we could free up three classrooms, one at Evans, one at UPE, and one at Spring City. And so that would still put us in a situation where we needed 10 additional classrooms that we don't have. And as far as where we get that square footage, that is our challenge for the school board and for the district. If we were to go down this route, we can identify the salary, we can identify the personnel, but it's, it's the square footage, the additional square footage that's going to cause us the headache. Now, there are some things that we could do. Some things are not going to be very palatable in this community, I believe. And the first being to add modular units. I know that North Penn has done, has done exactly that, added modulators. We could add classroom space per building. That is always an option. We could build a kindergarten center. So there are some options out there, what we would need to do. But we, the point is, we do not have the square footage available at this time to put this in. And that would be our challenge, to figure out how we would put these, put this into place. We know that construction costs, new construction, somewhere in the 300 per square foot range. So that's our challenge. So we know, we've got a pretty good idea of what the personnel would look like, got a pretty good idea of supplies. It is the square footage, it's the space that's going to cause us to pause and figure that out, how we would actually approach that. Any questions?
I'll go first. As far as space, I mean, wouldn't that be our first approach, determining how we, how we're going to accommodate this instead of going the other route? I mean, you've come up with a cost for...
Personnel, yes.
Personnel is, will, will there be additional administrators required for this?
If you went a kindergarten center, you would, yes.
Right.
There'd be, you'd, you would have that personnel that would need to run that. If you're tacking on two or three rooms on each building, not so much.
So that cost isn't included?
No.
Okay. Yeah, I just think, until we determine the option, I don't know how we move forward. I mean, that's the first step.
Agreed.
We're not, we're not looking at, I'm, all I was saying was, we're just putting some information together and then, and then saying, what would we want to do as far as what additional information, or where do we want to go next, or whatever it may be. We're not making a decision. No, I understand that, but this is going backwards.
I think it's just saying, here's the cost...
But it's not the cost.
To make that step, to run, to run it from an annual budgetary position. If we have interest in moving that forward, then we have to look at, you're right.
But you have to, you have to determine this first.
That's correct.
You can't go nowhere without this.
That's correct.
That's where your cost is. That's where your real cost is.
Agreed.
If you have the appetite to do it at all.
Yes.
Are we going to ask the community how much interest there is in having full-day kindergarten? Are we going to survey them to see how much interest there is? I mean, what's, what's the initiative for doing this study? Did you get a lot of requests from people saying, "We really would like to have full day"?
No. I've not received any parents requesting full day. Certainly hasn't come to my attention at my office. I do know that other districts have moved that direction. I also know that it is a campaign topic.
I, I think that there's a fundamental question wherever we're looking. Why are we, why would we do it? What are the benefits of doing it? Not just Phoenixville's doing it, or...
Agreed.
That's not a reason to do something. It's, why are we doing it? What the benefits? We, we score pretty well in our PSSAs, so is there going to be a benefit in there? I mean, just providing daycare for parents isn't really a reason. So the fundamental question is, why would we do it? What are the benefits?
That is the question.
And Dr. Good, I ask? Oh, sorry. I think I would really like to hear from the community, too, as Dr. Dressler just said, because we don't know if the majority of the community members would want something like this. And the impact to the whole community could be very significant from what we're looking at here.
And the people that are interested, don't even, probably don't have kids yet, a lot of them, because...
So before we even get to that part, I have a question about the numbers that you presented. You had indicated that we currently have 26 sections of 19 students, and you're projecting 27 sessions of 19 students, which is only accommodating an additional 19 students, but you thought maybe we would have as many as 150 additional stu... So I'm just curious and confused. I wonder if you could help me with that?
Okay, these, these are, these are 26 half-sessions.
But they're still 26 sessions with 19 students...
26 half-sessions.
With stu... Right. But 26 times 19 is 494. So our approximate rounded kindergarten enrollment today is approximately 494 students. When you look at 27 sessions, regardless of the time, the duration that they're in the room, you're talking about 27 classes of 19 students, which is only 513 students. So it's only adding 19 students to that enrollment.
But actually, you're adding... He used the first grade number.
Yes.
Which comes to 644. But if you have 27 sessions, you're looking at 24 kids per class.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, it's, it's a significant difference in...
Instead of 19.
In class numbers.
And this is all preliminary.
Yeah. Okay. I just, I just was trying to understand that part, and make sure that I understood.
Yep.
To 24.
Yep, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Dr. Good, I'd still go back, and maybe it's the dumb engineer in me, but I still say the options of a new building, modular units, whatever that may be, I mean, that's the driving force here. That's a number that is unknown, and will drive the rest of the conversation. Everyone's going to wrap it around what you're presenting here, but the real issue here is the cost of that.
And also, community interest.
Correct.
Right? Like, I know, I know my take on it, and as a mother or parent who'd had four children go through the district, I know what it costs to put kids, and the logistics of arranging kids for half-day kindergarten would have been a blessing for me, but from a school board constituent standpoint, I don't know what the current taste for that is across the district.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that we certainly are hearing a lot more about, you know, pre-K counts and, and programs, and getting students into programs earlier for, you know, better vocabulary, speech, you know, math, et cetera. So I, we're certainly seeing a push for earlier education. I guess the question is whether or not we are seeing anything from a duration perspective. So is there a value add for our students to go from a half-day program to a full-day program? And if there is, then maybe it's something we, we need to pursue a little bit further. If there's not, then there's a question about whether, you know, we don't have the facility for it. Are we, as a district, willing to take on that additional cost? If it's marginal, then we need to do a, a kind of weigh those options and see, and perhaps, you know, I certainly know some districts have done an optional full day. So perhaps some students would, would opt for a full day, and we maybe could accommodate a couple additional classrooms for that, that purpose. But, you know, without really having more solid data around the value add to the student and the, you know, the student's abilities and, and growth potential as a result of a full-day kindergarten program, it's, I think we're, we're putting the cart above the horse, in front of the horse a bit. So I...
Okay, so we're not putting a cart in front of the horse, we're not putting a hor... This is just preliminary. So the feedback tonight was just to get the conversation going as far as what information, what do we want to look at, what, if anything? So one of the big things is that, you know, we, and that's, you know, definitely, you know, about community input as far as, you know, and then we, we could couple that with, are there studies that demonstrate that full-day kindergarten is more beneficial to students than a half-day kindergarten? You know, Clinton, I mean, again, he's, I hear what he's saying about, we just presented some hard costs that we know, but again, there's, there's a whole slew of, you know, if we want to go down the modular route, what does that look like pricing-wise? I mean, there's more information. This was just to get the conversation going, and it's not, we're not going to have, we're not going to, we're not going to be in a position to have all the answers tonight that we're making a decision. This was just to get the conversation going. The end result is that, you know, from a, from a school district standpoint, for us to move to full-day kindergarten right now with the amount of students that we have and the space that we have in the district, you're looking at millions of dollars somewhere along the line by trying to, you know, hire staff and find somewhere to put, you know, 600 and, 650 or 600, between 600 and 650 students, when right now, we're at 500 basically students at half-day.
Right.
So we're looking at, and that's, I mean, these are all important questions that we need to put on the table.
Yeah, I think we're all just having that conversation. I think it's a good, it's a good dialogue. I think people are bringing up good ideas and good thoughts and, and questions, and...
The whole point, just get the doc, get the conversation on the table. The whole point, just get the doc, get the conversation on the table.
This really should go through a committee, and the curriculum technology committee is, I guess it's a natural one, or an ad hoc committee, one of those two ways, not just kind of off-the-cuff discussions at a school board meeting, or have the administration go off into a corner and come up with something. So it's really, it's really an involved thing that takes a lot of thought and analysis because-
It does.
-it's much more complicated than the number of slides here.
Yes, it is.
And, uh, and there were some other considerations that I would say, like, uh, is there an impact in transportation? You're cutting out midday bus routes-
Yes.
-but there's capacity issues that, because now you need more bus drivers at the end of the day and the beginning of the day. Uh, is there any impact on special ed? Because if somebody has a halftime and they have a one-to-one instructional aide or there's other instructional assistants or aides in the classroom, now you're doubling that for them. So there's special ed costs involved. And we're talking about today's kindergarten numbers. I don't know what the projection is over the next five years, so you may build X number of classrooms today, and then as the kindergarten population grows, then we, we have another problem. So it's not just building for today, it'd be building for the long run.
So, so based on, Mr. DeBello, since based on the conversation, so what's the next step now? Sorry.
Question would really be, I'm sorry.
Really, it's just, the board has raised a lot of good questions, which I believe we should answer, because we, as a district, we need those answers one way or the other. And, um, I, you know, I think it's a combination of curriculum, technology, it's, uh, there's property that's involved, there's finance that's involved. It's a, it's a full, it's a full cross-section of committees that would need to look at this as, and we're not going to have an answer within the next, by the next board meeting. It's just that we, just putting it on the table that there, this is a tremendous topic that, you know, we should be in a position to answer one way or the other, and it can't be an off-the-cuff answer to say, we're not doing it, or we're going to do it. It's, it's very involved, and, um, and it's, and it's important when you have districts around us that are doing it, and I'm not saying that's a reason to do it, but when the districts are around us doing it, we need to be able to answer the question as a district, why aren't we doing something? And here's all of the, the, the specific reasons why. It's, it's, we need to have that information, we should have that information. And, you know, we raised a lot of good points as far as additional costs, special education costs, transportation costs, you know, uh, uh, so it's really, there's just a lot that we, that has to be, uh, thought about.
And as Dr. Gooden said, there's nobody clamoring for this or asking about it, so-
Well, that's not a true statement.
Well, I mean, nobody's come to me.
Nobody's come to the, our head guy here. And it's like asking your kid, if he doesn't ask for a new car and you say, do you want a new car? He's going, yeah, I want a new car. So the more you, the more you ask people what they, if they want this, the more people say, yeah, I want that, because that sounds good.
Well, I think that our board candidates should probably, uh, quiz the people that they go to visit and find out how much interest there is based on the electorate.
That, that's anecdotal evidence.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's not-
Oh, there's, what other kind is there?
Evidence? There's analysis, surveys-
Yeah, but-
But not, if I, I asked 10 people and they give me an answer, that's not out of-
Well, you asked him if there was anybody coming to ask him, wouldn't that be anecdotal?
No, nobody's raised the issue, I guess, is the, the-
Oh.
With, with the superintendent.
Yeah.
And I, so that's-
So if there were a lot of people asking him, that, that would be or would not be anecdotal?
Coming out of left field right now, so, uh, that's, that's the point.
Well, I just, I just think that the, the public should have some way of weighing in on this, that there's a, a big interest, and, uh, also, I'd like to know what the, uh, the impact on the property tax would be for initiating something like this.
So for next steps, are you going to come back with some of the answers to the questions? Or are you going to wait until you're-
I'm waiting for a direction from the board, because this is-
He wants to know if there are next steps.
Uh, yeah, are there next steps? And, and do we need to put together a committee? Do we need, you know, to put together a survey? I, I would say, just off the cuff, most people that have children at that age would be in favor of it.
Correct.
Because it cuts down on their childcare costs.
I, then my one ask would be maybe to present at the, um, curriculum committee, uh, what some of the benefits are, like some, look into some studies that have actually, I don't know, maybe followed the two different-
Sure.
-groups.
We can start the curriculum committee and see what we need to go.
And then just like start to, just see if the discussion needs to go further.
Yeah, and if our PSA scores are really good, do they really have much place to go?
No.
And if we're looking at identifying kids at risk, there's other ways to address their needs than give everybody full-day kindergarten. It's like, you know, pre-K, and there's all kinds of things to identify them. We do already do something in the summer, so, so if we have kids at risk that are falling behind, full-day kindergarten may not be the answer for them. Matter of fact, it may be detrimental to them, because they may not be able to handle going from zero to 60 in one year.
So is there a soft target for this? I mean, it's, it's been brought up for a reason, so I'm assuming, underscore, Mr. Dennett said, that there's had, there's had to be some analysis done of this. So is there a, a soft target being, you know, two years from now, three years from now? Is there anything tied to a timeframe? Or we're just going through the-
This is, this is one of those matters I would just need direction from the board as far as, how far do you want me to pursue this? Because at some point, I would need to expend district resources to answer some of the questions that have been brought forward. For example, the, the square footage, you know, what's the best, you know, what's the best? I need, you know, what's the best option for us? Uh, I would need to expend district monies to, to find those answers.
I think a good starting point is what Kelly suggested, is to find out, you know, and present a curriculum technology, you know, what studies exist out there, the pros and cons of full-day kindergarten, and start with that. And in that- So I'll go back to the options again. I think the, I think the approach here, like, do we have acreage to build a center? Do we have space? Let me answer.
Yes.
Hard.
And I'm thinking one of our schools right now. We, we have a couple of schools with a fair amount of property around them. None centrally located though necessarily, although we, we, we do have some large pieces of property. We have one piece of large property, uh, on the outlier of the building, of the district that I, I would not recommend us doing anything with, but-
What about the administration, old administration properties? Is that big enough for something like that?
I don't think so. Five acres, I don't think that would be, I don't think that'd be enough.
Yeah, I think we have to be careful too, that the administration has a, only number, set number of hours in the day and the year that they can work things, and they have other initiatives. So the more we take from that to put to this, the less other things the administration can work on.
Would it, would there be an op-, an opportunity to move kindergarten out of the elementary schools, push fifth, fifth grade back down, so that the elementary schools would accommodate first through fifth, flex schools six, seven, eight, and then maybe utilize the current eighth-grade center? Uh, there's, you know, first, like, the, the middle floor, not the, you know, or something like that. Again, trying to think about whether or not we could make a shift, and, and that would be certainly central, uh, to the district. I, I just don't know, room-wise, whether that would be an option.
And space?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I think there's a lot of options as far as what we could do space-wise. I think we should go back to the original question as far as what studies out there support, the pros and cons for doing a full-day kindergarten from an education standpoint.
Okay, let's start there then.
And I think we should answer that question first.
Well, I would hope that all these teachers with their master's degrees and PhDs will have studied, somebody would have studied this issue and can report to us and let us know what they found. I mean, we have degrees stacked on top of degrees. Must be somebody who did some research-
There is.
...in their educational degree pursuit that has looked into this issue, I hope.
I, I can tell you right now that, that the studies we're going to look at are, uh, there's going to be a heavy reliance upon socioeconomics in the community that drive these decisions.
Have any of our administrators that have PhDs done a, their dissertation in full-day kindergarten?
No.
Did they want to?
Bob? Oh, you already have a subject?
Dr. Gooden.
Yes.
If, if, and this is for the board also, if the intent is not to do this, why are we going to go through this process?
Uh, I, I'm not sure that the intent is not to do it.
No, I'm saying, there has been, no, but what I'm saying is this, Dawn, there has been effort put forth, there have been, uh, resources utilized, so the intent is to move with this, no? Otherwise, I don't know why we're going to go back and do an analysis.
I think the intent was to gauge interest and sort of see, are we interested as a board in moving forward with discussions or exploring the options? And why or why not?
This is very limited information. I mean, this is basic.
I think the, the simplest source of information is to go to the local school districts that have implemented this and say, why did you do it?
I don't care about the other school districts.
You don't care why they did it?
No, no, you gotta stop comparing, you know-
It's not comparing, it's asking for information. They obviously have gone through this process and analyzed it and said, well, we've, we've decided based on our analysis that this is the way to go, and why can't we learn from them? I don't understand why we have to reinvent the wheel.
We could do the same thing with swimming pools. We could go ask PV and O&amp;J why they built swimming pools.
Oh, okay. Is there any wrong with that?
I think Mr. DeBello said the purpose was to kind of get, get the discussion going, and I think we did that. And I think directive, you know, Kelly had made a great suggestion, and, and Mr. DeBello agreed that, um, the next step would be, you know, to, to pull together some of the studies and some of the information, um, and, and really kind of make it relevant to our district and, and make sure that it's representative of the district, you know, that, that we serve, and, and bring that back, um, to the, the, um, technology and curriculum committee, hopefully Sept-, uh, September or October, um, and then, and then we go from there. But I think we've had great conversation, but I, I, I think we're at a point now where there's really not much more for us to, to discuss until we have an understanding of what the val-, you know, what the value is to our students. But I also thought this was very useful. A lot of parents ask me why we don't have all-day kindergarten. So I think this, and I didn't know that we didn't have the facilities for, that we needed classrooms. I thought this provided a lot of useful information.
I get asked all the time.
I do too.
You know, I, um, but I think it's important, again, that this was just, just to get some information together, but the bigger thing is for us to, as a board, to understand what's the pros and cons to having a full-day kindergarten. And socioeconomics or demographics is extremely important, because there are areas that use it as daycare. Uh, I also know that there's a lot of daycare in, daycares in the Springford School District that are offering full-day kindergarten. So we, we should just have our arms around why we would, why we would or wouldn't do something, because this, the board could admit it or not admit it, and I don't understand Dr. Gooden's comment that nobody's reached out to him, because I know that people are talking about it all the time. So it would be to the board's advantage to, to at least understand the pros and cons behind doing something. And then if we continue to decide we want to move forward, then we could say, all right, if we want to move forward, then we could look at what will we do building-wise? You know, what, what would the impact to the district look like? If we, if we expanded the buildings, if we built a kindergarten center, if we add a, you know, add a, expanded building or, you know, brought in the ever-favorite module units? Which I will say, module units today are probably nicer than a lot of classrooms when you see them, but, uh, they have that, you know, 1970s feel that they're not like that anymore. They're unbelievable what they're doing, module units, but it's just something as a board that we should just be kind, I'm not saying that we invest thousands and thousands of dollars, but there's a ton of information out there, and we should just find out, you know, why there would be, why there are full-day kindergarten, what the impact could or couldn't be. And definitely an input to all that is our PSSA scores at that levels are, are really solid when you're looking at compared to districts, um, around the state. But then, I, I've, I've said it before, and I, I really don't care how Springford compares to the average school district in Pennsylvania. I care about the other top 10 or 12 districts in Pennsyl-, you know, Pennsylvania, which some of them are in our, in our right backyard, and, uh, so it's something that we should look at. I just ask on the studies, we get a fair and balanced submission on that, not something that's very diagonal. Just try to be fair with the information that's being presented.
Yeah, you show me an issue and I'll show you a study that supports my position.
All righty then.
Based on that point of view, we should not study or try to find any information about anything, because it's always going to be, uh, directed towards whatever your proclivity is.
I was, I was just reemphasizing what Mr. DeBello said.
Sometimes you just gotta laugh. Um, okay, finance committee met August 13th. Um, we're one of the few committees that met. One of the reasons is because we have a lot going on in the district that's, with the financially impacting. But we did go through the June, uh, final numbers for the, for the year. Mr. Fink did preface the conversation that these are soft numbers, and he wanted to make sure I pointed that out, is because the finance and accounting team is preparing for the annual fa-, uh, fall audit, and we will get all our specific, uh, and finalized numbers, and typically we see that, uh, in the October timeline. Uh, right now, our cash balances, including, uh, funds and reserve, are approximately 68 million, which is to be expected. Uh, there are still bills and some things that are, will be, uh, some, be paying off that. Our preliminary gross revenue numbers track generally as budget, with the IT and transfers coming in higher than budget, which is great, due to the strong economic conditions that we've, uh, been all experiencing. So we looked at and have about additional $1.3 million in revenue. Our expenditures, uh, are tracked well and are within budget. June is a big month, because we do have salary accruals and things like that, but we're still tracking very well. Uh, when you look at, um, as I reported last time, if you all remember back at the June, uh, board meeting, we were looking at figuring that we were going to have a surplus somewhere in neighborhood of 500,000 to 1 million dollars. Right now, we are in that predicted range. We're looking at about a $900,000 surplus. And I have to say that with a $165 million budget, to have a $900,000 surplus, I believe, as Jim and his team has done an incredible job, uh, we never want a deficit, uh, we know that, but you'll never be 100% on, especially as, when you're looking at these large budgets. And there was a few things that, like I reported on, uh, EIT, earned income tax and real estate transfer taxes was a good year, so we ended up, uh, bringing in a, a higher revenue than we anticipated. Our Cess numbers, our Cess, total Cess values for the district is 4.038 billion, uh, and the current, I'm sorry, that, the 2019, 20 budget is 4.038 billion, and the current actual is 4.036 billion. So the difference equates to approximately about $50,000 in taxes at the face value. Uh, I anticipate that we'll make that up rather quickly. Uh, as I talked about, the real estate transfer tax, uh, is doing very well. We came in about $450,000 over budget, um, and, uh, our earned income tax as well is, we're over, um, about $300,000. So, um, we're, we're sitting very well. Budget, we're anticipating a good budget year. We're gonna, I'm definitely anticipating excellent budget audit, and we will be looking at utili-, not utilizing, but parking that surplus, uh, next year, um, and, well, not, probably in October timeline is when we, October, November is when we have to make the motion, uh, from the, from the table as far as, um, where we would park that money. Typically, we put it towards capital projects. So moving on, food services update. I know that there's, believe it or not, there's been a lot of changes occurring within the cafeteria. Um, I know that there's, uh, some additional changes that they're hoping to get in play before school starts, um, but Airmark is currently installing some new signage, marketing materials in, in the buildings, um, and also menu, menus are generally set, as well as the back office systems and supplier relationships and schedules. So we're, we're in good shape, um, as far as where we want to be at this point in time as we move forward with utilizing Airmark as our food services provider. move forward with utilizing Airmark as our food services provider. We also are looking at new to the 2019-20 school year, although I'm not sure if it'll be implemented within the first week of school. Mr. Fink, you could let us know. But we are looking at providing a breakfast option for our students, but that will be most likely in place third, late third quarter, early fourth quarter. Is that general target? So I'm sure that the kids are gonna be really excited about having that opportunity as well. And yes, anything related to free or reduced lunches will also apply to the breakfast options for students. We did discuss summer hiring to date on open positions, and we are within the budget as far as where we anticipated monies-wise. One of the things that we are, I asked Mr. Fink to look at, is for us to get a somewhat of a breakdown, understanding, now that we moved the tax schedule up, it would be really interesting to see the amount of effort that goes towards preparing and having the real estate taxes ready to go, as well as the Montrier interim process and the impacts on the district. Minimal or maximum, we'll find out what that information would be. Other than that, meeting adjourned at 7:20. Any questions?
Yeah, out of the $900,000 surplus, how much money did we, I don't know if Mr. Fink knows this off the top of his head, how much money did we get from the state that we didn't know we were getting because we passed the budget before the state totals, how much they were giving us last year? Because I would think we've been a similar boat this year because we got more money than we anticipated for this year's budget from the state. So we know roughly out of the $900,000, that figure is a couple hundred thousand, whatever it may be.
Yeah, that would be a couple hundred thousand. I think it was approximately $250,000 coming from the basic education funding subsidy.
Is it the same situation for this year, too?
I couldn't answer that until the end of the year. They do reserve the right to change that number.
Okay.
But also, was there a change to the PISA contributions? Because the state's been notorious for doling out money to the school districts and then taking it back through the PISA contribution. So was there a change to that?
Yeah, there was a change to that. It was compared to the prior couple, you know, the few prior years since I've been with the district, that change has been, that was considerably minor. It went up about one, one and a half, I'm gonna say, basis points from the prior year. So we're now at, I think we were at 33% last year, we're a little over 34% this year of wages, gross wages.
And what would that equate to?
Now you're asking the hard questions. I think you're looking somewhere around, off the top of my head, I think the impact, if salaries and wages remain the same, I think the impact year-over-year was somewhere around $1,004,000 or something like that.
Is that in the budget or that's not in the budget?
Pardon?
Increase in the 1920 budget, is that PISA increase in the budget?
Oh, yes.
The 1920 PISA, what we always, what we do with the budget is we always budget what we get from the state the previous year, so that we know.
About the PISA amount, because you said the PISA.
That's in there because they have, they roll that out in January, February, what the changes are. So that amounts in, and when we're budgeting state dollars related to education funding, we always budget what we got the previous year because you never know up to the last moment of actually receiving that money, if you're getting it or not. But in all honesty, Springford is way, way underfunded when it comes to the state. Actually, it's quite appalling. So let's talk about, oops, about property then. So we met right after Finance at 7:30, August 13th, at the district office. We did review the high school expansion project. At the time, we're, overall project completion is 96%, which was through August 13th. We are, and is Robert here? No, he's not here. I know that there was a final inspection for the occupancy permit, and I don't know if we got an update on that, but I believe, and when I did see Dan Kerr in passing, I could be wrong, but I believe that they're going to allow us to utilize the building to its fullest, knowing that the elevator's coming. But that, we need clarification from Robert Hunter.
I believe Mr. Hunter included that in the Friday memo that we actually did receive certificate of occupancy for all of the additions, with the understanding that the elevator will not be in until, will not be in fully operational and inspected until towards the end of September. So the mezzanine will not be able to be utilized until that time.
No, that's not true. The mezzanine should be able to utilize because there's a secondary entrance to that, utilizing another elevator.
I thought that's what was in the memo.
I don't know, I'll have to ask because.
But I know he did. That's off of my recollection, and I apologize, that's.
Because when I ran into, when I ran into Mr. Kerr, he said, oh yeah, you guys are, you should be okay because there's a second entrance to the mezzanine. So I don't know, we could get clarification from. So there was, unfortunately, he didn't put in the meeting minutes the number of projects that were completed throughout the district over the summer. He, his, him and his team have done an incredible job. I wish he had everything listed here as far as everything that was completed on top of the high school expansion, but it's not, I don't, I can't even go through, think of the list through my, but if you drive throughout the district, there was paving projects, the tennis courts were resurfaced at the ninth-grade center, scoreboard was put in, roof project was going on at the high school. Huh?
Asphalt.
Yeah, paving. They ran all the plumbing and sewer lines for the baseball field, that's completed, which, that was incredible because they ended up going with horizontal boring instead of ripping the parking lot up. So that, and all the, and he was thrilled when they were able to do that. He was able to get subcontractor off of the state contractor list to do that. So that's all in place. They even bored from the bathroom over to the concession stand at the baseball field and didn't disturb any of the asphalt. Their windows were replaced. I can't think of any, you know, I mean, it was just, it was, it was a lot. I mean, when he was going down the list, I was like, holy macro. And I said, well, when's all the building, all the cleaning gonna be done? He said, it's done. So all the building, all the buildings were clean and ready to go for start of school on August 10th. So, plus they had the Rorschford, which will be on, it's on the agenda, Rorschford. Elementary school pipe insulation replacement project had additional to the original school, work previously approved by the board, basically the costs associated to that, they found some more insulation that needed to be replaced. We did have a presentation, we go into our school safety. We had an overview, and I'm not gonna get into too much detail, but we did have an overview of the camera system and, you know, the system that we're looking at moving to. And there's also a mutual link and different things that the chief board is looking at putting in place. There was the announcement of additional three officers that were hired and will be starting. I don't, I guess they're, they're hired, right? So I could give their names, so it's Nick Delmarano, Mark Ricochet, and Terry Hyde, all coming to the district with amazing experience, background, education certifications, top-notch. We have the most premier police force, I would say, of all school districts in Pennsylvania and probably beyond. Chief Board continually has his team going through firearm training and certification. They do that quarterly. He, there was a, attended NTOA school workplace violence training. I don't, what does NTOA stand for?
National Tactical Officers Association.
Yeah, that.
Everything's an acronym, in my world.
Everything has an acronym. And they are looking at applying for some more additional grants. There will be some things that will be coming up again with the new state budget and other things. They're looking at grants for safety and security, state grants, signage, ballots, fencing, doors, glass treatments, et cetera. So there's a whole laundry list of things I know Chief Board is gonna write grants for, and hopefully we're pretty successful in getting that. And finally, the installation of the two-end phones and video intercoms, and basically the Vestivu communications throughout the entire district. As the board remembers, there was, I think it was Rorschford, and what was the two districts, or school, schools you started with, with the Vestivu communication?
We're the only ones that are getting the mutual link besides two other school districts, and our communication system will go with the different emergency management coordinators.
No, but I'm talking about the video cameras that you put in for the, for the staff at the, in the office so they could see who's coming to the door.
Alertus, there's gonna be a mass notification system put in, there's gonna be different layers for different parts that have to go out. We're working on that.
And your goal is to have that district-wide? All I'm saying is that you already have that at a couple of schools, right?
Right.
Which schools were they? Which schools?
Yeah. Well, we're gonna start out with that five, six, seven, that'll be the hub, and then move out from there.
Okay. All right, and the action items are on the agenda for approval. There's, like I said, additional pipe insulation, purchase and installation of cameras for the five, six, seven building, and also additional police vehicles that will come out of capital purchases, projects. Any questions?
I have one. Are the four police vehicles, replacement vehicles, or are they additional?
Additional.
How many do we have already? So it'd be seven? Are they cruisers? Is it a, or are they?
Well, not to give away too much of the tactical plan, but since we have seven elementary schools, two will be patrolling in two different zones to go all to those schools, to get more of a presence in the middle schools, and then the two vehicles that actually stay at the high school with those two officers. So they're already, two, they're in play right now, three in play, and the Polaris, and the other ones will be for myself and the three other officers to get to those locations.
Is that a lot?
That's used for patrolling throughout the district. We have seven officers, we're gonna have them going in seven different directions. Any other questions?
Tom, we have seven police officers to date, right? Based on the last three?
Correct.
Well, that is why we are the model for school policing.
Do a study on that.
That's a good talking point, Colleen.
Any other questions? Assistant Superintendent report.
Thank you, Mr. DeBello.
Thank you, great report.
All right, and, once again, I want to say thank you to the Springford community and the school board and the administration for bringing me on. It's been a great, this is my first day of the third week of my employment here. It's been, everybody's been very welcoming and very warm, and I appreciate that. Thank you to Erin Crew and her team for getting it out, for getting the information out there. I was at, as I, I'm a parent in the district as well, I was at a parent event, and somebody stopped me and said, you're the new guy, because they recognized my face. So that speaks to Springford getting, getting the good news out there. Couple of items, been a busy week and will be a busy week coming up. Last Friday was new teacher orientation and induction, with over 35 excited candidates with a diverse range of experiences and years of service. Thanks to Beth Lees and her leadership team for their amazing work this summer to bring us the best of the best. Also, I want to say thank you to Katie Gardi and Heidi Rockland for planning three new teacher induction days. They took on a lot of the lift since we were waiting for a CNI person to come in. So thank you to those two. This Wednesday marks the first teacher day, official teacher day, which also brings on convocation. And I've done my homework, I've watched some convocation videos, and I'm excited to see firsthand what convocation looks like for Springford. I've already started to meet some of the teachers, and they're already getting geared up and getting their classroom set and getting excited. So it's a good time, it's an exciting time of the year. Today at the high school and tomorrow, self-guided tours. Saw many excited ninth graders walking through the building, 10th graders walking through the building, figuring out where their classes are. Some had a few bewildered looks on their faces, trying to get their, get their bearings about them, but it was a great day, it was a great time to meet a few students. Another thing that's happening today, tomorrow, and Wednesday, modernized learning device deployment has happened. Happy to report that Bob Catalano and his team distributed over 350 Chromebooks to students today in their two sessions. They've got two more days, everything went very smoothly. Parents and students look pretty excited to receive their devices. Cohort six of modernizing learning is up and running, and we're planning for a full immersion into modernizing learning for the 2020-2021 school year, which is a rollout plan that has been and works for a number of years, as you all already know. Lastly, most importantly, to Juliana's point, next Monday is our first student day. We're very excited to see them coming into the building. As, as I've been here more and more, there's been more and more students coming in with band camp initially and with sporting camps, and some, I think we had some tennis things going on today. A lot happening in the district, all winding up to the first student day, which I'm very excited about. We cannot, you know, I never want to forget that they're the reason why we do all that we do, so I can't wait to see Springford in action on day one. I'm told that South Lewis Road is a sight to behold on arrival and dismissal, so I can't wait to check that out. But thank you again.
Welcome, welcome. Good luck.
Did you meet Mark Fitzgerald? Okay, just wanna make sure.
Feel free to ask me questions, Don.
Thank you for that introduction. Hope everybody had a very good summer. One of the things that we do in our office during the summer is, in part, review the changes to the school code that might have a immediate impact on our clients. One in particular that seems to be coming up with a lot of our districts that we represent was the initiative by our legislature with regard to essentially cybered school days during emergency weather events and the like. It seemed in theory, or seems in theory, to be a decent initiative, but there's an unrealistic timeline that they put out to the, to the school entities to try to get a plan in place without any consideration of, I think, profound labor issues that are implicated with regard to our professional staff and professional days will account for them in terms of compensation and the like. I've heard many issues with regard to special education implications when you have disabled students at home, and it's gonna count as a student day potentially. How do they get their services and it result in a free, appropriate public education? So there are many questions, and I can assure you that a number of districts are absolutely, you know, up in arms as to how to implement this, and that is the one major one of a number that seems to be getting a lot of talk this month. So we'll certainly keep you posted when we hear more.
Any questions? Okay, and before we get into the agenda, the board did meet in exec session this evening to discuss personnel items. Okay, any questions? Meeting minutes, A and B.
C.
C, also. Personnel, A through L. Finance, A through I. Property, A through D. Programming, A through G. Conferences and workshops, A and B. Other business, A and B. Any board comment?
Yeah, I was reading the Mercury today, and I saw that one of our former teachers has passed away, Richard Repko. I had Mr. Repko for German back many years ago, and he was an excellent teacher, very well-liked by the students, and it's a shame to see him go. Matter of fact, at my, it was my 40th high school reunion, he actually came. He was the only teacher I think I've ever seen at a high school reunion, and, but he was a great teacher, and the community will miss him.
So I'm fortunate to see, you know, people pass on like that. I'm sure he was an excellent teacher, liked by many, so, you know, condolences to his family, you know? So if you know, you can pass that on for us as well. Any other board comment? I do have a couple of things. One is, is that we didn't have an IU update over the summer, but last, I guess it was in June. The. in June, the Harrisburg School District hasn't been doing very well for a period of time in the state. And its infamous wisdom decided that they were going to take over the Harrisburg School District. So in doing so, the next step is, okay, so now what are we going to do? We need to find somebody to actually manage the Harrisburg School District. So, lo and behold, because of, and it's all attributed to the board at the IU, I'm like him, but, the Montgomery County IU board, or the Montgomery County IU was tasked with taking over and managing the Harrisburg School District. And Dr. George and his team down at the IU have been, over the last few months or so, have been engrossed in not only running the IU, and they're doing an incredible job down there, but have put staff or getting staff in place to take over and managing the Harrisburg School District with the hopes of, of bringing that to the levels that it needs to be at. So, it is a little bit of pride in Montgomery County that we have such a strong IU and a successful IU as far as what we're doing there, and, you know, as you know, I've sat on that board for several years, and then Christine's been sitting on the legislative board. But like I said, it's a little bit of pride when you're, when an IU, because I think there's what, Mark 23 across the district or something like that?
I think a few more, but-
A few more, somewhere in there, yeah. And for, for the state to come to Montgomery County IU and ask them, ask us to take over managing the Harrisburg School District, I think it's, it's, like I said, there is a lot of pride, and I'm sure, within a short period, I won't say short period of time, but I'm sure it'll be successful in, in bringing that up to par.
Tom, with that, have you heard whether or not there will be any impact to the school districts in terms of services received by the IU, given, you know, their shift in, in focus and priorities at this point? And obviously, Harrisburg has certainly struggled immensely, and so there's a lot of work to be done there. So I just didn't know if there were resources that we have relied on that, that will not be necessarily available or as readily available to us.
No, there won't be any impacts because what the IU is doing is facilitating and getting strong people in place in the school district in Harrisburg. I believe one of the people that they tapped into was the Norristown Superintendent, who was very familiar with the demographics of Norristown, which are very similar to demographics in Harrisburg. So that superintendent's been in place probably about four months now. So they, they've been focused on really working with Dr. George and, you know, getting the support from the IU, but really working on putting a strong, you know, infrastructure and support staff in place at the Harrisburg School District.
I'd also like to share in board comments that our communications department has been working really hard over the summer, and especially in the last few weeks, not only to put out there about and to welcome Mr. Rizzo, but lots of information has been going out to the parents, the students, the families, about what's happening with getting back to school. One of the other pieces out of communications that will be coming out is the in-community publication I had mentioned out of community relations last year, and that, there was a nice meeting that took place over the summer. A lot of the details were ironed out, townships are on board, boroughs are on board, and that first publication will be in print and will be delivered to every mailbox in Springfield. Should be happening in early fall. Is that correct, Ms. Crew? What's the timeframe for that? October, October. And then there will be three additional communications that will go through email later throughout the year. But it'll be nice to see that kicked off and, and just the communication continue to grow through the district so that everybody can be on the same page and informed of all the great things that are happening here. So, thank you for all of your work on that.
The only other comment I'd like to make, you know, because it's, it's been a fun summer, but I've seen an article recently published by a school district that took some of their surplus money and decided to provide some type of gift card or something to all of the teachers in the district to be used for additional supplies in the classroom. I don't know how they did it. I thought it was kind of interesting, especially when I was looking at that we potentially could have a $900,000 surplus, and I was like, you know, school supplies for teachers is always interesting, but I was like, and I just want everybody's head to just go.
You can go ahead and say, Mr. DeBello, that I shared that with you.
Okay, Colleen, shared the article with me.
It's on your favor then.
So anyway, so I don't know. I mean, I thought it was an interesting idea, I thought it was an interesting concept. I know that Pennsylvania has some funky laws and stuff when it comes to purchasing within a school district and what you have to go through. I don't know, I don't know if it's something that, you know, we're able to do, I don't know if the board is receptive to doing something like that, but I thought it would be a-
Why would that district give up its tax-exempt status and give the money to an individual where they would have to pay taxes, you know, on the sales of whatever they're purchasing? That blows my mind just in terms of-
I don't know, again, like I said-
And then there's other tax implications, you know. Putting aside the, you know, it may be a nice initiative, how they did it blows my mind.
Yeah, I'm just throwing it out there that, you know, again, this, school districts do stuff, but I don't remember if it was in Pennsylvania or if it was out of, you know-
I don't think it was one of my clients.
Probably wasn't your client. But things, things happen. So all I'm, all I'm saying is that sometimes, I don't say we have to do exactly that, all I'm saying is that, would there be a way that we could potentially get a few more supplies into the classrooms, knowing that we have that surplus? But we're not going crazy and spending all of the surplus, but I thought it would be an idea of, of just getting, you know, something back into the classrooms, you know, somehow, you know, through, through school supplies. It's just an idea.
There's, there's an organization called Donors Choose, and that concept might be something that would work where teachers could maybe email in to us, like, I'm not sure what the procurement process is for supplies, but say, "If I could, this is what I would need or would like for my classroom," and then the district could designate somebody to go through the procurement process and fulfill those needs, something like that. So it's not, so it wouldn't be, we would be giving them, giving gift cards or something, but just a-
Keep the tax a little-
I'm not sure if anyone else is familiar with how Donors, Donors Choose works, but-
So teachers can select one item or multiple items, and basically, once it's fully funded is when, then the supplies are purchased and sent to that teacher. So that's an option, but the other thing we might be able to do is also do a building allocation for kind of discretionary with guidance on how to distribute those funds.
Wouldn't that be a taxable?
So there's a number of ways that it could be done, if it's something that we want to look into, but maybe it's something to add to the finance committee meeting and discuss it.
Again, I'm just, I was, I, you know, we saw that article, and I thought it was interesting, and I thought, you know, as a way that we could possibly, as a board, put, put a little something back into the classroom supply related. It's not an opportunity for, all of a sudden, for teachers to start putting together the wish list of, oh, if I only have, I'm not saying that, but, you know, markers, pencils, notepads, index cards, I mean, I'm sure there's, there's a lot of thing, tissues, I mean, you know, but I, I don't know, I just, I just saw it, and I thought it would be, just thought it would be something that we could look at it somehow and say, but I don't know, I don't know where the board would be at with that.
But I think there will be a taxable benefit.
Not necessarily.
It depends on how it's allocated, I think, again, if it's, if it's distributed to the buildings for discretionary use.
It would seem to, just to clarify, it would seem to be that the proposal would be to put it at the building level, and the teachers would submit a quote-unquote wish list, but then the procurement process would stay with, within the school-
Right.
And no money would, so that, that would, that would be less concerning on that level.
Yeah, I mean, there's, it's not, yeah, again, I'm not saying that we issue gift cards, all I'm saying is that it was, I thought it was a, it was a great idea, that it was something that we could possibly do where we could put a little something back into the classroom, you know.
I think it's a great idea.
As a husband of a teacher, I know my wife spends hundreds of dollars a year for school things.
So what's, where's the board at? You want to bring it to finance? I mean, it was something I wanted, I thought we could do rather quickly, not like real quick, but, you know, I don't want to turn this into deep dive studies and analysis and-
Why don't, why don't we bring it to finance and then submit a recommendation from finance for next month's meeting?
Okay.
We have Dr. Gooden do an analysis on that when he's doing the kinder, full-day kindergarten analysis.
It's anecdotal. You show me a, what'd you say? Show me a study? Show me a school supply, and I'll show you. Any other comment? Nope. Public to be heard. Motion to adjourn. Second, favor say aye. Aye, meeting adjourned. All right, I'm going to go.